Bien de esta comunidad señor. Gracias, te damos padre, hijo y espíritu santo. Thank you, amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Let's begin. Thank you.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Dávila.
Present.
Vice Mayor Barón.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Here.
City Attorney Salinas.
Here.
Okay, so with this we'll go with item number one.
The city council will consider a ratifying appointment by councilmember María del Pilar Avalos of Margarita Valenzuela to the planning commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if Ms. Valenzuela can please come up and just give us a little bit of a brief background on how long you've lived in the city and what is it that you plan to do when it's appointed?
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here. So my name is Margarita Valenzuela. I, with my family, moved to Southgate in 1994. So we've been here a little over thirty years. I have not had the pleasure of meeting the rest of the planning commissioners, but I hope that alongside with them, we get to bring more, bring together the community and bring, you know, what the community needs, looking in their interest. Being that we've been here for so long, we would, you know, like to see just what Southgate has always been about, about the people in the community and their best interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Valenzuela to the planning commission.
I'll second. Go ahead, Gil.
I'll second. The reason I wanted to second it is I'm keeping track of your running and it's getting better all the time.
Thank you.
All right, good, good job.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barón.
Yes.
Mayor Dávila.
Yes. Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to, uh, city manager. You wanted to move one item to next council meeting?
Yes, at the pleasure of the council, I was asking for some more time for item number twelve, which is our land use study. We've been reviewing the proposal from the recommended candidate and we believe we have some adjustments which may be helpful. And we just didn't quite have enough time to button those up for tonight. So if we could move that to the next meeting. It's not a hearing, but it's just a report out that we wanted to present at the next meeting, if that's all right.
Okay, thank you. So item number twelve, will be moved to next council meeting. That would be on June twelve? Twelve?
No. Tenth, I believe.
June tenth?
Yep.
Oh, June tenth, okay. And do we need a motion for that or just continue?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second, okay, I'll second the motion. Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barón.
Uh, yes, I just had a question, city attorney. Do we need to bring this to the public to comment if anybody was here for this?
Not at this time, we'll just move it forward.
So yes.
And Mayor Dávila.
Yes. Okay, then we'll go back to item, uh, we have a public hearing, which is item number two.
The city council will consider, A, adopting a resolution ordering the levy of the fiscal year 2025-26 annual assessment for the street lighting and landscaping maintenance district, number one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So this time I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any, uh, any members of the audience that want to speak on item number two? No, being none. Do we have any emails on item number two?
We have no emails.
No emails on item two. Counsel, any comments?
Make a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barón.
Yes.
Mayor Dávila.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. Now we're going to item number three.
The city council will consider, A, determine in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, the project qualifies for categorical exemption under CEQA guidelines, section one five three three two, class thirty-two, in field development projects and is thereby exempt from CEQA. The project site is surrounded by urban uses and proposes, proposed residential condominium subdivision will be compatible with the surrounding existing development. B, uphold the action taken by the planning commission at its March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting by adopting a resolution attached hereto approving vesting tentative tract map number eight four five three one associated with the fifty-four unit townhome development at ten one three zero Adela Avenue. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayors. I have in other occasions when we have a, a public hearing here, I just want to share with the folks that are in attendance the importance of this public hearing. This is a, a hearing that is much like a administrative proceeding. It's like if you were in court and instead of having a judge in court, you have the five city council members here that will be making the decision. But much like in court, it's important to allow, uh, for the presentations to be made. It's important for everyone to listen to the presentations. People may say things that you do not agree with, but it's important that you refrain from commenting of those other than at the time when you come to the microphone, because we have to, we have a duty as a city to make sure that the transcription of what is said here is accurate in case there's any future litigation before an actual court. So I would ask everyone here in the audience to avoid applauding, to avoid making any comments. If you don't like anything that is being said, you will have an opportunity to make a comment from the microphone and your comment will be a matter of public record if you choose to speak. But it, it is important here that we maintain the same level of respect that you would expect to see in a courtroom. So I, I wanted to make sure that, uh, and if, if, if somebody doesn't adhere to that, we'll have the mayor just use a gavel and, and try to bring this back into order. So far, we've had everyone in other public hearings understand that and we, I appreciate the respect that you give to the council and to these proceedings in advance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, city manager?
Uh, thank you, counsel. Just to give a quick run of show of how this proceeding, public hearing, will work, starting off will be the city staff will give a overview of the project, a summary of the steps taken to date, and then it'll be passed off, uh, passed over to the, um, appellant, the, um, folks who put in the appeal. They'll have a chance for their presentation. And after that, the developer, who is proposing the townhomes, will be given a chance for, uh, their time at the mic. And at the close of those two, um, presentations, the public comment period will open. So everyone who's here to speak on this item will be invited to stand along the side wall, be in a queue, come forward and have a turn. Each one of, person who wants to speak to, uh, share their thoughts on the project. At the point where everyone's had a chance to speak, the public comment section will be closed and then we'll return back for the council to, um, have a discussion and decision on what to do. So just to help everyone understand the process that we're going through, those will be the steps. And at the point the mayor's ready, our staff are ready to present for you. Okay, I'll just add that at the end of public comment, there will be a chance for any extra closing comments from both the, uh, appellant and the developer.
Okay, so this time, uh, the first one who's going to be doing the presentation, so I'll just, Gabe?
Uh, Mayor and counsel, senior planner, Pelago is going to be providing this presentation.
Can you just please state your name for the record and who you work for?
Hi, good evening, honorable Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Rodrigo Pelago. I'm the senior planner within the planning division, city of Southgate. So this item before you is the, um, it's an appeal filed by the appellant, Jose Morales, on behalf of Southgate Progress Partners. And the developer or applicant for the project proposal is Nick Patterson, Nick Patterson and City Ventures on behalf of Southgate One Investments LLC. Just to give you some context with regard to this project, on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission considered this project, um, before you, uh, which involved a proposal for a vesting tentative tract map number eight four five three one. And the planning commission adopted a resolution, a resolution approving the project. And with that approval, they also found that the project is categorically exempt, uh, from CEQA under class thirty-two of the guidelines. Um, as far as the, uh, the, the hearing went, uh, there was concerns from the public, the residents, after the, the approval. More specifically, some residents, uh, within the surrounding neighborhood raised concerns about the replacement of a K-rail barrier uh, that's currently located on Adela Avenue, just, uh, adjacent to the project site. City staff held meetings with the residents that had raised these concerns just to clarify the details about the project and, um, confirmed that Adela Avenue will remain close to regular traffic with the one concept that the barrier would be replaced for, or with a different type of, uh, device or, or barrier for emergency and maintenance purposes only. With that, um, staff was, uh, attempting to revise condition number sixty within that approved resolution. This was an effort between staff and the applicant and residents as well. However, uh, through a series of conversations and meetings between all parties, uh, the condition was not accepted, uh, by residents and the current or the original conditions remained and are before you in this, uh, meeting tonight. On April seventh, twenty twenty-five, the appeal was filed by Jose Morales and the Southgate, Southgate Progress Partners. And this appeal specifically challenges the, uh, planning commission's approval, as mentioned, uh, the CEQA exemption. The applicant did submit a response letter and also a traffic study to city, uh, staff on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And the original condition number sixty is no longer, uh, being accepted by the applicant. As far as the project, uh, details, uh, more specifically, the vesting tentative tract map is intended to subdivide a one parcel site into fifty-four condominium units. There's an associated development proposal, which would consist of a three-story attached townhomes for sale and within a total of six buildings on the site. Six of the units throughout the entire site would be offered at moderate income level, which are considered affordable housing under state law. And the associate development that was being proposed or is being proposed by the developer was subject to the administrative plan review and design review processes, which were conducted and completed at staff level on March twentieth of this year. Design review, um, is not subject to city council review. So it's, it's important to note that what we have here before you is only the tentative tract map that's associated to the development proposal. So city council would only review the, the tentative tract map and make their decision or consideration on this basis. This is an aerial view of the, uh, subject site with its surrounding context. As you can see, it's, it's bounded with, or it's identified within the red outline. Uh, it's located at the intersection of Legacy Lane and Adela Avenue. The site's currently surrounded by the Legacy High School complex to the north and to the east. There's a, uh, industrial, uh, use directly adjacent, I'm sorry, the, the, the school is located directly to the north across Legacy Lane and to the west. To the east, we have an industrial facility, um, operating adjacent to the project site. And then directly to the south, we have a residential neighborhood. Here's another aerial, uh, perspective of the subject site and its surroundings, just for context. As mentioned, there's, uh, residences directly adjacent to the south. So also worth noting that the site's, um, uh, separated between or by a public right-of-way between those adjoining residences. This is a parcel map of the, uh, project site. It's currently developed, or it's not developed, but it's currently existing as one parcel. The applicant or developers proposing to subdivide this into fifty-four, uh, lots. These are some images of the existing site conditions, uh, within the vicinity and also the, uh, surrounding, um, uses. The image to the top of the screen or, or the, the image, you have a view looking into the site from Adela Avenue, looking east. The image below is, uh, view looking at the site from the intersection of Legacy Lane and Adela Avenue. Here we have additional images. The one to your top left is a view looking into the project site from Legacy Lane, um, looking southwest. There's another view from the street, um, looking at the, uh, Legacy or High School complex, which is directly across the street, which is the image to your top right. And then there's another image on the bottom left of the screen, which represents or depicts the, uh, another view of the, uh, Legacy complex directly across the street, right at the intersection of Legacy Lane and Adela Avenue. The slide before you represents the developer's proposed tentative tract map. So it identifies, um, some proposed easements that go along with the, with the site improvements. This is another exhibit within the proposed tract map and it shows, um, it's, it's kind of hard to distinguish there with all the line work, but there's, uh, six buildings within the project site with some driveways, three driveways that would, um, provide access along Legacy Lane. Within the, uh, Southgate municipal code, there's requirements for approving a tentative tract map, which are listed in the slide before you. And, um, the, the way the process works is, uh, planning commission would have to consider the, uh, tentative tract map and provide a recommendation to the city council, who would ultimately, uh, make the final decision whether to adopt a, uh, tract map for any proposed project. So the planning commission has already adopted a resolution making the recommendation in favor of the proposed tract map. And what we have is the second step in the process, which would be, well, in this case, there was an appeal filed, but the second step in the process would be, uh, the city council's consideration after the project is developed. When the project is developed, uh, we have a final tract map, which would be brought to the city council for final adoption. So the appeal that was filed by the appellant, um, claims that the project does not meet all the criteria for a categorical exemption. It cites that there's unusual circumstances, an exception under CEQA. And there's, uh, several concerns, uh, the primary ones being that the site is, uh, it's, well, the proximity of the project within, uh, Legacy High School vicinity. There's also unresolved traffic safety issues, air quality and noise concerns, and the history of the site contamination being another concern. So first, a primary area of concern would be the traffic and pedestrian safety near the Legacy High School. Uh, the claim states that the proximity to the school raises safety and, uh, traffic issues. More specifically, the K-rail replacement and, uh, the deferred study are seen as CEQA violations. Now, staff's response to this matter is that, um, there was a, um, technical studies conducted for the proposed project, one being a traffic analysis. And within that analysis, um, which is called the, uh, VMT model, it screened out and, and pretty much states that there's no significant impact from this project. And as a result, the project would qualify under this, uh, class thirty-two of the CEQA guidelines. Um, the other, uh, item is, uh, condition number sixty, which is a condition, uh, derived from the Public Works Department. It's, uh, a metric that's used not for the CEQA compliance, but rather, um, it's a planning tool, um, from the city's perspective to implement safety, um, or enhance, uh, safety on the, from the public infrastructure side. Now, Adela Avenue is proposed to remain close to regular traffic. That's something that staff has clarified. And, um, the K-rail is to be replaced with a decorative emergency access barrier as the, uh, condition is written. The other area of primary or primary of concern would be the air quality and noise impacts. Technical studies were conducted and, uh, report were, reports were prepared uh, in terms of air quality and noise impacts. And the studies, um, they pretty much determined that there would be no, uh, impacts from the project. However, um, there is concerns raised by the, uh, applicant, uh, appellant with regard to, um, the cumulative air quality impacts near schools and homes. And they are calling for a, uh, health risk assessment, which is another technical study. Other concerns would include the, uh, construction that, uh, from the, or construction noise that's generated during the, uh, uh, development of the proposed project. So there's, um, just to, in addition to the technical studies that have been prepared, there's also, uh, best management practices that are, uh, implemented from the, the, uh, our building department, um, during construction projects. So there's standard conditions that involve dust control and limited work hours to minimize any potential impacts. When projects are being developed, that being the case in this project, there's conditions that would, um, help address those type of concerns. Staff has also determined that there's no substantial evidence of significant adverse impacts or effects based on the studies that were conducted. Another, um, area of concern that was, uh, raised by the, uh, appellant is the, uh, soil contamination of the site and its history. So, um, the site has a history of being used for industrial purposes in the past and there, it was contaminated at some point, but over time, previous ownership and even the current ownership have worked to remediate the site. And, um, so the applicant has provided documentation. Now, the concern raised on the appeal is it calls for a phase-two environmental site assessment and, uh, full hazardous materials disclosure, which would, um, essentially require additional technical studies, which are normally not warranted if we're following the CEQA guidelines for a categorical exemption. So, uh, other, um, as part of the review, staff has determined that, um, other agencies that govern contamination of sites, for example, Department of, uh, Toxic Control Substances, DTSC, the Water Control Boards and other agencies, um, have pretty much cleared the site and then determined that it's no longer, uh, contaminated. So there's no substantial evidence of environmental risk to disqualify the project under class thirty-two categorical exemption. And then the last area of, uh, concern, uh, raised on the appeal is, uh, regarding the CEQA unusual circumstances, there's an exception to the exemption. And, um, the appeal states that, uh, it claims that school proximity, traffic deferral and soil history create unusual circumstances. It also argues, uh, these disqualify the project from the categorical exemption. Now, staff believes that the project, uh, does meet all the, uh, criteria to fall under an exemption. There's no substantial evidence of significant impact from unique site features. The proximity to the school and in the industrial history of the site is very common to other contaminated sites and, uh, in urban infill development. So it's very common for formerly contaminated, contaminated sites to be redeveloped into residential, uh, projects. And that's the case in this, in this project as well. So a community concern alone does not meet the CEQA's legal threshold for exemption, uh, denial. So staff has confirmed that the project qualifies for a categorical exemption under CEQA. This determination is based on, uh, the information that was previously stated with the, uh, supporting documentation of the traffic analysis, the air quality and noise studies as well. Condition number sixty is not a CEQA mitigation, but it's rather the metric for evaluating future, uh, public improvements. This is a very typical condition required by the public works, uh, to improve public infrastructure that's, uh, immediately surrounding project sites. Now, the appeal does not present some substantial evidence of significant environmental impacts or unusual circumstances that would invalidate the use of this class thirty-two exemption. I'd also like to point out that, um, this project falls under the Housing Accountability Act, which is a state ordinance or, or bill, which, um, prevents local governments from denying, reducing the density of or rendering projects, uh, that involve housing to be feasible whenever they meet the objective standards. So the focus is on objectivity. Projects consistent with objective zoning, general plan and design standards are protected from arbitrary denials. Localities, um, so the city would have to show a specific adverse impact to public health or safety, uh, that's supported by the preponderance of evidence in order to be able to deny such projects. Um, there's also, uh, consequences or violations for cities that do, um, not follow these rules and that being that denials in violation of the HHA can lead to court orders and fines up to fifty thousand dollars per dwelling unit for bad faith and also maybe forced to approve a project. So with that, um, staff's recommendation to the city council is to find that this project is categorically exempt from class thirty-two, um, CEQA, uh, guidelines, specifically infill development projects, and to uphold the planning commission's decision by adopting a resolution to approve the tentative tract map number eight four five three one, which is subject to the proposed conditions of approval and/or any other conditions that the city council may wish to impose. This concludes my presentation.
Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, yes, go ahead.
Would I be able to just, uh, emphasize one point before we hand it forward? Uh, thank you, Rodrigo. Um, just emphasize this second last slide talking about the, um, HHH rules and state mandates. Um, this, this is a new and continually evolving process of our state government and people have heard of housing rules. Uh, some people have heard of HCD and, uh, allocations of RENA numbers. There's a lot of technicality there, but essentially over the last, at least ten years, the state has set mandates of how many new housing units need to be available in communities. And they increasingly pass legislation after legislation that takes the ability to control or manage those units away from cities out of your hands as council and they put them into laws from the state. And so emphasized in Rodrigo's second last slide is, if a project meets the criteria the state has set up, we, we are, there's very little wiggle room for a council to override that and that's the concern we have here and we've highlighted in this slide here talking about the high burden of denial. This project meets the criteria for, um, allowing housing units with affordability in the right zone. It's got the, uh, general plan and standards that are all protected. So denying it is very difficult. And this is due to state regulations, not due to city rules. So I just wanted to emphasize where the, um, you know, concern could be laid or where the rules that have been evolved have left our community and gone to Sacramento. They want more housing units and, um, they're out to get them and this is an example of, um, such a project that meets that criteria. So I just wanted to highlight that and make sure everyone was aware.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to add on to what you just included. Rodrigo, you indicated fifty thousand per unit of bad faith. I just did the math. We're talking about two point seven million dollars of our We're talking about $2.7 million of our general fund that we would have to pay. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Just want to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So?
One last note, if I may, sorry to interrupt, one more thing. Um, also, in discussions with the developer, we've been trying to, and we'd had discussions with the neighborhood, we've been trying to talk about different alternatives for the K-Rail and the gate. And, um, in the interest of trying to, you know, find a way to have the committee be heard, have the developer be heard, have, you know, mitigate as much as we can from some of the concerns people have, the city's been willing to withdraw condition 60 and offer to allow the K-Rail to remain, um, and not have it be part of this project. Again, the agreement, no matter what, is that the city is, um, committed to not having through traffic on Adela, be it a gate or a K-Rail, but for the simplicity of moving forward, we're willing to remove that condition from the staff's perspective as part of the application.
Okay. Okay, so our next speaker, would that be?
Uh, so, uh, Madam Mayor, just, uh, at this point, we're going to first hear from, uh, the individuals that filed the appeal. And so we'll have them come up and, uh, take the microphone, and if you could identify yourself, and then the mic will be yours.
Go ahead.
It was a different PowerPoint. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Uh, my name's Jose Morales, I'm a, a resident of Southgate. I live at 5343 Almyra. I'm here with my wife, Beatrice Morales, on behalf of the concerned residents of Southgate. Now, we're here to respectfully ask the City Council to reconsider parts of this project, specifically the removal of the K-Rail barrier on Adela Avenue, and also the environmental concerns tied to the development. Now, this is not about stopping housing. It's about making sure that it's done responsibly with public safety and community health in mind. Next slide, please. Now, while we're appealing, we filed this appeal because we believe that the city's approval of the project overlooked two very serious concerns. First, the K-Rail is more than just a barrier. It plays a critical role in protecting our neighborhood and our kids walking to school. Now, second, there are also unresolved issues around site contamination that haven't been fully addressed with the, um, city members. Now, we believe that this project deserves a full environmental review under CEQA. And I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Morales to expand a little bit more on these two concerns.
There's no clicker, right? I'll just let you know.
No.
Okay.